Good evening, everyone. This is the May 7th meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members. Counselor Guanasso?
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky. Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo. Here, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Counsel President Janino. Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of April 23rd, 2018. I'm going to call for suspension of rules. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered. At this time, we're going to take up calendar item number five, the zoning subcommittee report. I'm going to defer to committee member Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Earlier this evening, Chairman Rotundo held a meeting pertaining to the new billboard ordinance that was drafted in conjunction with Counsel McKenna and the Revere Beautification Committee. I don't see any members here right now, but they were here earlier. And just real quickly, I think we all owe them a debt of gratitude for the work that they did in trying to curtail the number of billboards that there are in the city, as well as slow down any progression that may come about or be attempted to come about through the City Council. So with that, you know, I'd like to absolutely offer my thanks to the Beautification Committee and report out to the rest of the City Council that the vote was unanimous in favor of the ordinance change as written. So it was a five to nothing vote with the members who were here earlier. And so with that, Madam President, I would hope that the roll will be called and this ordinance will be adopted, thanks to the hard work of all those involved.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would just like to add that I wasn't the only one on this committee. Counselors, Counselor Morabito, Counselor Janino, Counselor Powers, Counselor Keith, and Counselor Guanasso were also on this committee. So I don't want, I just, just to verify so they can get credit too. Thank you.
Any other counselors wishing to speak? Anybody wishing to speak? Madam Clerk, we'll do a roll call. That's right, it's an ordinance. So ordered on a second reading? Ordered on a third and final reading? Madam Clerk? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment. Shall the City Council approve CZ-18-04, an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to billboards? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo? Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo? Is he is recused? And Counsel President Janino? Yes. Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. And I do want to take a moment to say, this was something that our colleague, the late counselor and former mayor, has started. So I think that it definitely pays a tribute to his legacy that his work is still going on in these chambers. So, thank you. At this time, we'll take up calendar item number 15. Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the Revere Police Organizational Review. And at this time, I also want to acknowledge Chief Guido, who's with us today, too.
Madam President, good evening to the members of the council. Over a year ago, I made one of the more difficult decisions in my time as mayor, when I declined to renew the contract of Police Chief Joe Cafarelli. While I respected Chief Cafarelli's dedication to his job and service to the community, I deemed it imperative to place at the head of the department a person whose design of our city's police force mirrored my own. I promoted Captain James Guido, a 31-year veteran of the force as police chief. At the same time, I authorized a comprehensive, independent organizational review of the department to obtain an assessment of our department's strengths, its weaknesses, and how we might restructure aspects of RPD to better meet the needs of our city. To that end, I retained Ryan Strategy Group, a private consulting firm headed by Arlington Police Chief Fred Ryan, who is in attendance tonight. Chief Ryan has over 30 years of experience in law enforcement, and the group that he leads is acclaimed for its thorough, evidence-based assessments. Chief Ryan, along with Chief Brian Kies from the City of Chelsea, were directed to put a magnifying glass on the department and report back with its results. These two measures, appointing Chief Guido and retaining Chief Ryan, were neither separate nor distinct. I considered this a two-pronged approach to improve the Revere Police Department. At the same time that I vested full authority in Chief Ryan and Chief Kies to assess the Revere Police Department, I vested full authority in Chief Guido to lead the department. I empowered Chief Guido to get to work as soon as he took command, as either I nor him were content to wait until an assessment was complete, to begin to make the changes that we felt were necessary to advance the Revere Police Department. We agreed that regardless of the result, the assessment would be made public, and that it would become a helpful tool when it is finally published. If the assessment differed from the measures that Chief Guido had ordered, we would, of course, address those individually and arrive at thoughtful, productive resolutions. Today, with the release of Chief Ryan's assessment, I am gratified that it validates many of the changes that Chief Guido, and this is more important, most important, is the RPD command staff, that they've already started to implement. Just as important, the report provides functional recommendations that will help set the course for the Revere Police Department and the foreseeable future. When I took office, I observed complex challenges in the Revere Police Department, and complex challenges do not yield to simple solutions. Complex solutions entail tough self-assessment, honesty, ingenuity blended with a strong dose of courage. Above all else, complex solutions require cooperation. As I stand here before you tonight, I am eager to continue our work with Chief Guido and his command staff to enforce the changes that they've already implemented, to now take a hard look at some of these recommendations, and to determine the most effective way to merge these recommendations with the positive changes that are already happening in the Revere Police Department. Madam President, Chief Guido and Chief Ryan are here to answer any questions that the council may have. I will be available as well. Look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll open it up to any members of the council. Any members of the council have any questions? Seeing as there are none, anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just curious, is the, are the unions here tonight? I thought, Chuckie, I thought you were, I thought you were all done. I thought you gave it up.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. I just wanted to come and see what the results of this assessment were going to be. I can't speak. I just learned recently that there was an assessment and then it was completed, and I came here tonight to see what the results of it were. I read it on the website.
Are you still the president of the?
Yes, I'm the president of the Superior Officers Union, yes.
And who's the president of the Patrolman Union?
Officer Duca. He isn't currently here tonight.
Okay. Did he get a copy of this, though?
I'm not sure if he did or he did not. I did not receive a copy.
You didn't receive a copy yet?
I got a, read it from the council's website, that it was on the agenda.
Okay, well, you know, I'll be glad to work with both of you if you have any questions of.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Counselor.
And I got one more question. I'd like to know how much this survey cost?
Counselor, through you. The price said it was $42,000 from forfeiture money, from drug forfeiture money.
That was the total cost?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll ask Chairman Patch, should this be go to committee or placed on file?
I believe it's going to be put in committee, but I'd like to get some feedback from the unions and, I got a bunch, I've read it myself, and I got a bunch of questions that I don't think, I don't want to say yet until I, because it really pertains to the people that are working there today, the union, that actually do the work on the street. I want to get feedback first. So I think it should go into committee.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess this is either to the chief or the mayor. Has this, has this been shared with the entire force? Do we know the results? Have they been shared with everybody, or is it just the command staff that knows what the results are? And I take it that the head of the Superior Officers Union didn't hear anything about this, so can somebody answer that?
Good evening, counselors. The report was just completed, and it went to the council, and tomorrow I'll put it out to the whole department. The command staff got a copy of it Friday, but it was also a public record. And the department was heavily involved in the assessment and during the whole review. So it's not a surprise to.
No, 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 I wasn't insinuating it was a surprise, but it sounded like, you know, it hadn't been shared. Obviously, if we had an assessment, there's some things to correct.
Everyone's going to get a copy, but the final document just was finalized the middle of last week.
Okay, but I heard the mayor say that you've already implemented a lot of these things. Did I not hear that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, look forward to the committee meeting.
That's all I have.
Counselor Rizzo?
No, I think some things were just cleared up. I absolutely think that this should be moved to subcommittee under Chairman Patch, where we can have a chance to at least look at it. We just received a document over the weekend, and to have to go through it and really understand, you know, some of the changes that are looking to be implemented, I think it's going to take more than just a weekend to go through it. So I think absolutely move it to the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, the mayor, I guess, who is supposed to be putting in the ordinance changes once this goes into committee? Who's going to format it?
So the, we have the recommendations. As I said, we're going to dig into the kind of details of those recommendations. We know, you know, the administration knows that there is collective bargaining that needs to happen for some of these recommendations to happen. We know that there are ordinance changes that may need to happen, so we want to have the conversation with the council, have everyone, give everyone an opportunity to digest some of the recommendations, and then we'd be probably proposing some of the changes to be made that need to, that need either ordinance changes or need to be collectively bargained.
One more, through Madam President, to me. What kind of timeline are you talking? That you want to see this accomplished?
And I think there are, there are a number of different kind of goals that we want to reach and the recommendations that we want to meet, and some of them are short-term. As Counselor Zambudo said, there are, there are some that were, I guess, no-brainers. So Chief Guido implemented them. They're in the report, they've already been implemented. There are some longer-term, more ambitious recommendations that it may take a long time to implement. But this is really, what I look at is a roadmap for the short-term, you know, for very short-term, for mid-range, and for, you know, long-term, 10, 20 years down the road. So there are, there are some recommendations that may take a lot longer, and they're going to, as I said in my remarks, it's going to take cooperation. That means cooperation from our bargaining units, that means cooperation with the council, that means cooperation with a lot of folks. So that's what we're looking for.
Through you, Madam President, is it appropriate when they have, when the mayor has meetings with the unions that the chairman of Public Safety be included in those, so he can hear what's going on and actually hear from between the Superior Officers and the Patrolman Union? I don't know, I'm just asking, you know, if he's willing to do it, of course, or someone on the committee from the council be part of the package in discussions?
So my opinion is that negotiations with the unions are up to the, I am the sole bargaining agent on the city side, so there are some, I guess we can talk about that, but there'd be some kind of scenarios that I would not like to see happen in those negotiation sessions that I wouldn't want to go down a certain path. But, but I think that, you know, if there are conversations that need to happen and people need to be apprised of what's happening, there's something that we can do.
Okay, I look forward to working with everybody. Wish everybody good luck. Thank you.
Counselor Patch?
Thank you. Madam President, I just want to comment on that last comment from, however. Personally, I don't have a negotiated for the Patrolman Union with three administrations, and I don't think it's any place for, that's between the, I agree with the mayor, that's between the mayor and the union officials. But I'm sure we're going to listen to both ends of the discussion. So I personally don't think that I would have any part, I should not play a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, counselors. This will be going to the Public Safety Committee, and I ask the clerk that we notify both unions as well as the chief, so they're aware of the dates when this committee meeting will be held. While we're under suspension, I ask that we take up calendar item number 16 as well. Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor regarding the distinguished budget presentation award.
Good evening, members of the council. I just wanted to quickly inform the council that the City of Revere has received the distinguished budget presentation award for its current budget fiscal year 18 from the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. This, I think, is another symbol and another testament to the current financial strength in our community, on the heels of our bond rating upgrade and the certification of the highest amount of free cash. I think this is just another great sign that our finance team has been doing a terrific job, and I want to thank Director of Finance, George Anzoni, our city auditor, Richard Visquet, and of course, our former city auditor, Lori Giudella, for all their hard work, and all of the staff that is here in the city. This is another great award for the city, and we're, we're excited, and I think it shows some of the great things that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to you and your staff for this accomplishment. Any other counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll make it brief, and I know that this is, this is obviously a good accolade, but I just want to point out the fact that we too often, and including myself, we sometimes focus on the negatives. But an award like this, but not just that, the financial strength that our city is in should be something that we should all applaud, and I think that obviously the administration, the city council, the residents, we're all, the city's in a really good position right now, and I think it's, it goes unnoticed far too often. We have a neighboring town, just one, one city north of us, that just had to borrow, I believe, eight and a half million dollars from the state. We're in a very good financial situation, and we're poised for continued success. We have been in a very good situation for many years, and it's just continuing to grow and continuing to get stronger. So I think kudos goes to everyone in the city of Revere, including, of course, the residents, but city council should take some, a little credit there as well. Sometimes, like I said, we focus a little too much on the negatives, and I think it's important to see that this is something that is very good for us in our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keith. Any other counselors? I think a lot of that is due in part that I believe that George Anzoni is probably one of the most tenured directors of finances in the Commonwealth, so we're lucky to have the team that we do. Seeing as there's no one else, that'll be placed on file. And last, while we're under suspension, I ask that we take up calendar item number 14. Calendar item number 14, communication from the retirement board requesting approval of an increase in the COLA base.
James Caramello, 11 Eaton Street. Madam President, esteemed counselors, good evening. Over the past three years, I had the privilege and honor to serve as the elected member of the Revere Retirement Board. My term expired on April 6th, so I'm here tonight as a private citizen and a Revere retiree to speak in favor of the COLA base increase. The cost of living adjustment, the COLA, is based only on the first $12,000 of a retiree's pension. It doesn't matter if you make $20,000 or $100,000. Your cost of living increase is only based on your first $12,000. This is the lowest in the state. Revere is last. I don't like it when Revere is last in anything. It's been 22 years since 1996 since this COLA base has been adjusted. In 2013, the Revere Retirement Board agreed on a motion, passed a motion, to increase the COLA base to $16,000. That motion was later amended to go in steps of $1,000 over a period of three years and to max out at 15, which is more in line with the state average and is also more in line with our surrounding communities. I asked the council tonight, it's been five years, if your motions took five years to be enacted, I'm sure you wouldn't be very satisfied. So tonight, I ask you to move forward with this $1,000 increase, and then readdress it next year to follow through with the motion as the way it was written, $1,000 steps to reach the $15,000 max. This is long overdue for the retirees, and I hope the council, in their infinite wisdom, votes to increase the COLA base increase tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I believe we have former city clerk, John Henry, here.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, and members of the council. I'm here this evening as chairman of the City of Revere Retirement Board to request your approval of an increase in the COLA base. In the year 2010, the Massachusetts Legislature authorized local retirement boards to increase the base, and the base is what COLAs, cost of living adjustments are calculated on. And currently, we are at $12,000 per year, and the retirement board gives a 3% annual COLA, which amounts to $360 per retiree. Under this increase in the COLA base to recommend it to $13,000, this would give each retiree, eligible retiree, $390 per year. So we are asking for your approval. Members of the retirement board spoke to the mayor about this, and he has agreed to the increase, and it is now a requirement of state law that the city council, as well as the mayor, sign off on this to move it to a base of $13,000. And there are 102 retirement systems in the Commonwealth, and 69 of them have already agreed to the COLA base increase. So we respectfully request your vote of approval to increase the base to $13,000. Any questions?
Thank you.
Madam President, I know I can't vote on this, but can I speak on it? I'd like to speak on it. Thank you, Madam President. John, I just want to wonder, if I, if I'm correct, Jimmy said that it was approved in 2010 for $50,000?
A letter.
$60,000.
A letter and a vote.
You guys approved it for $60,000.
A letter was sent to the council at that time, the last meeting of the year, and when the council adjourned, signed die, that letter went with that signed die. We have evaluated the retirement board's financial position, and it was based on that financial position that the retirement board voted to approve an increase of $13,000.
Okay, well, I'm a little confused here. If it was voted in 2010 to increase it to $16,000, am I correct in the way I heard?
That was a different, that was a different membership of the, than retirement.
Well, how come that never took effect?
It came to the council on the last meeting of that particular year, and it went to the city council, and the communication died, died in the city council's signed die.
I don't, you know, I really don't understand that, but.
To increase the base takes a vote of the retirement board, a vote of the city council, and the approval of the mayor.
Okay, and you're saying that came before the council?
It came to the city council late one year as a communication. It died at the last meeting of the city council that year, and the members of the board have subsequently changed. The current board evaluated the retirement board's ability to fund this, and it's based on a recommendation of $13,000.
Okay.
Any other counselors? Chief Guido?
Madam Chairperson, I just want to be recorded as in favor of this.
Thank you, chief.
I'm not retired yet, but it's long overdue. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam President, just one question.
Sure.
Is this for one year? Is it one year? Forever?
So just because the mic wasn't on, the question was, is this a permanent increase? And the answer was, it is, it'll be perpetual, so once it's voted on, it'll be on the ongoing years?
So for the next four years, it'll be increased?
Continuously, until a further increase is created. So currently, it's at 12, 13. Going to 13.
So it stops at 13?
Madam President, point of information?
Sure.
Okay, just a clarification for the council. Again, I don't want to step on the chairperson's toes here for the retirement board, because John Henry is more knowledgeable than, I highly respect what he does for the degree of retirement board. But during my three-year tenure, these were minutes that I received because I was not a member of the board in 2013. But in 2013, the motion was passed by the retirement board, which you know is a separate entity from the city. The retirement board voted for a motion to increase the COLA base to $16,000. That was amended by the retirement board to have $1,000 increases for three concurrent years. In other words, throw away their first motion to $16,000 and just have $1,000 increases over the next three years, maxing out at $15,000. So that's the motion that the Revere Retirement Board voted on and passed, and came before the council in, I think it was March of 2014, when it came before the council. I may be a little bit, that might have been, I think that's when it came before the council. I may be a little bit off on my figures, but that's when it went to committee and never came to fruition. So the motion on the table by the retirement board was for $1,000 increases over three years, maxing out at 15. That's what I'd like to see come to fruition. But right now, we're looking at the $1,000, let's not, let's crawl before we walk, walk before we run. Right now, we're talking about getting up the first part of that motion, $1,000 increase, from 12 to 13. And I think the number is from a $120 increase to each retiree per year on a $1,000 increase. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, just to my colleagues, this is something that I personally believe is long overdue, if we're eight years later discussing it before the council. It could be voted on this evening, so unless anyone wishes to put it in committee, I believe that we could vote on it. I know several members are accused, including myself. I know several members are accused, including myself, but is it the will of the council to vote on it this evening, just from a nod? Sure? All right, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chairperson, I have to recuse myself for the appearance of conflict of interest.
Thank you, counselor.
Madam President, I have to accuse myself also.
Thank you, counselor.
Madam President, I also have to recuse myself.
Thank you, counselor.
Madam President, I want to make it very clear, I have no conflicts on voting on this. None. I am not retired or related to anyone that's retired in the city.
Madam Clerk, I have to recuse myself. Roll call.
In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32, Section 103-J, shall the city council approve an increase in the COLA base from $12,000 to $13,000, beginning in fiscal year 2019? Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent, and Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the COLA base has been increased.
And that was a unanimous vote of all eligible councilors, so, just for the record. All right, so that covers everything under suspension, I believe, so at this time, we'll return to the regular order of business. Calendar item number three, public hearings.
Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance relative to departmental revolving funds.
Is there any proponents here this evening?
My name's George Anzoni. I'm the Director of Finance for the City Revere, 281 Broadway, Revere, Mass. I am in favor of this and as a proponent. The laws were changed in the Municipal Modernization Act of 2016. As far as the revolving funds appropriations are concerned, it had to be done yearly before, and now this is a one-time, time that has to be voted on by the council. So a list has been given to you by the city auditor and the list of the accounts and the amounts, and I'm in favor of these being voted on favorably.
I'm also going to ask Madam Clerk to read a letter on the record as a proponent.
Richard Viskey, the city auditor, would like to be recorded as a proponent. He has submitted a memo to the city council. "I would like to have this memo read as part of the public hearing in favor of passing the formal adoption of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, as amended by the Municipal Modernization Act, which was adopted by the Massachusetts Legislature as part of Chapter 218, Section 86 of the Acts of 2016. I apologize for not being able to attend this public hearing in person, but I am out of state until Wednesday evening. The following is a brief summary of what department revolving funds are and why it is necessary to adopt this new ordinance. Revolving funds take receipts from a specific revenue source and segregate these receipts from the general fund into separate funds on the general ledger. The receipts are earmarked for specific purposes to support the activity, program, or service that generate the receipts. Typically, revolving funds are authorized for programs and services with expenses that fluctuate with demand and can be matched with fees, charges, or other revenues collected during a particular fiscal year. The department head or officer in charge of operating the program has the spending authority, but can only incur liabilities and spend from available funds. All of the funds, all of the listed funds have existed in the city for many years. However, the acceptance of this new law as amended will make all of the listed revolving funds part of the city's ordinances and will eliminate the need to renew these funds annually as previously required. The annual vote that will be required by the legislative body is the annual spending limit of each departmental revolving fund, which will be part of the annual budget process. I strongly urge favorable action on the adoption of this new ordinance, not only because it is required by Massachusetts General Law, but also because it formalizes and clarifies each of the existing departmental revolving funds in a format that is both simple and transparent. I will be available at the May 21st meeting to answer any and all questions on behalf of this. Also, I can always be reached by phone, or email, or in person if anyone would like further information on this matter. Thank you."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other proponents here this evening? Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? And keeping in mind, this will be referred to Legislative Affairs on the 21st. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Judge. Any new accounts have to be voted on separately, or is it change in ordinance, if they wanted to add any?
All new accounts should be changed. You don't have to change any of the new accounts.
Your mic, Judge?
I know I couldn't. Sorry about that. No, again, to repeat, you don't have to change the ordinance, but you, again, you have to just vote on the revolving, particularly revolving fund that you want to add.
And then after that, it'll be included in the budget following?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Seeing and hearing none, this will go to Legislative Affairs on the 21st at 5:00 PM.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on the parity salary ordinance for Section J of the Revere Revised Ordinances.
Any proponents here this evening?
Yes. My name's George Anzoni. I'm the Director of Finance for the City Revere, and I'm in favor of this ordinance because it gives those city employees who are not part of the unions the rotated salary increases that were, have been done for Unit A and Unit B. So it's really a matter of fairness to pass this ordinance and so that the, all the city employees can be under the Unit A and A, and what was agreed under the Unit A and B contracts.
Thank you, Judge. I also want to acknowledge Counselor Rotundo, who is with us this evening. Any other proponents here this evening? Any proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors? Also, keeping in mind, this will be going to Legislative Affairs, which will be held on the 21st at 5:00 PM. Seeing and hearing none, this will go to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number six is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, the Legislative Affairs Committee met at 5:00 this evening, and we had two items on the agenda. One was an ordinance relative to snow and ice, and we decided there was a little more homework to do on it, and we will take it up at our next committee meeting. However, we did also have an ordinance further amending the water and sewer ordinance, and we took that up and voted it out favorably, so I'm looking for a roll call vote on that tonight. Thank you.
All right, this will be ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance amending the water and sewer ordinances of the city of Revere? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you, councilors.
All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Madam Clerk, can we take up calendar item 17?
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the city council order to a public hearing an ordinance amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to townhouses.
Thank you, Madam President, and more importantly, thank you for suspension of rules and allowing me to deal with this issue. Right now, after speaking to both the city solicitors, as well as the building department, we don't have any particular nomenclature for townhomes or townhouses. What this does is it sets a framework where we can work within it, because frankly, you have developers that want to develop in the city, and instead of going through the tawdry of multiple processes, special permit, we set our own standard, and we do it accordingly. And my thought is, if we can put this in committee, I'd greatly appreciate it so we can work to a better solution.
Legislative Affairs, or zoning, or what is your?
Zoning, please.
Sure. Any other councilors wishing to speak on this? This will go to zoning.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, Counselor, are you requesting a public hearing, or just for it to go to zoning, and then from that point, go to a public hearing?
Madam Clerk, if I'm not mistaken, we can go to basically a zoning subcommittee, and then when we need to, put it to a publication? Or what's the best process, ma'am?
Well, it was up to you. I wasn't sure if this was something that you needed to work on within a zoning subcommittee and then order it to a public hearing?
I'd like the input of the councilors, to be quite honest with you. I don't think it would be fair to, you know, submit something of this nature without their conversation and breath.
Sure, so we'll take it up in committee, and then from that point, put something forth to order to a public hearing.
Thank you for your direction.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Oh, we already ordered it to committee. All right, we're good. Back to the regular order of business. At this time, we'll take up calendar item number eight.
This is the Appointments Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Guanasso?
Madam President, early this evening, the Appointments Subcommittee met, and we had a few items on the agenda, the first being 18-128, the reapportment of Precopio Enterprises. That was voted out favorably. 18-134, reapportment of Raphael Construction as a licensed drainlayer, that was tabled for non-appearance. 18-139, reapportment of Menino Construction Company as a licensed drainlayer, that was also tabled for non-appearance. 18-154, we have the appointment of Deborah Santiano McHatten as a member of the Conservation Commission, and that was approved. 18-155, reapportment of Tufts Construction as a licensed drainlayer, that was also tabled for non-appearance. In 18-156, reapportment of N. Granisi and Sands Inc. as a licensed drainlayer, that was also approved. Madam President, I would appreciate the fact that you vote all those favorably out all at once, and with the exception, if there's any objection for any council member, we can do so. Take them separately if we wish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see any objection from the council, so based off of your committee report, calendar item eight, nine, 10, and 12 will stay in committee, I'm sorry, nine, 10, and 12 will stay in committee, and we will vote on eight, 11, and 13. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo, absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
So we're on calendar item number 18.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor requests the DPW to repave the parking lot at the Rosetti Senior Citizen Center. The parking lot is in deplorable condition, containing large potholes, broken concrete around a manhole cover, and an uneven embankment. These conditions make it difficult and unsafe for anyone to park and walk into the center, especially the seniors utilizing the facility.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. So last week, I was at the Rosetti Senior Center at an event, and I was walking through the parking lot, and it was horrendous. And I just feel we have to take care of our seniors and everybody else that parks there. And I just think, you know, we really need to help our seniors with this center. There's a lot of things that are going wrong with it. They have mold in the basement. And I know Counselor Haas was trying to, he put a motion in to try to get that fixed, so I'm talking on his behalf. I really think that we need to start with the parking lot and then work towards the mole in the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I think this motion is well-placed. Every time I get down there to an event or something at the senior center, there seems to be more potholes and more pits in that asphalt than the last time I was there. I think not only should the entire lot be repaved, but I think perhaps some spots be designated for senior citizens who come down there and, you know, need a place to park their car. I mean, they're elderly people, it's very difficult for them to navigate those streets, particularly with potholes, and I think those spots that should be designated should be as close to the senior center as possible to give them a little, something extra in life. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Obviously, this motion makes a whole lot of sense. People have complained about the condition of the parking lot behind the building, and but equally is bad, and I haven't been down there in a while, so I don't know if anything's been done, but a lot of seniors are forced to park in the municipal lot, and the municipal lot was in very bad shape the last time I was there. Again, I haven't been there in a couple weeks, so I'm not sure if anything's been done, but I know that we did have money set aside, this is back a couple years ago, to resurface and repave the municipal lot. I don't believe that has been done, but it should be done, because a lot of seniors, as they say, are forced to park in that municipal lot and then cross over and have to, you know, sometimes in bad weather, so obviously, you know, work needs to be done there to make it as safe as we can for people who use the senior center. Excellent motion, Counselor McKenna. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. Counselor Zambudo, and then Counselor Powers again.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to congratulate the council vice president on her motion. It's a great motion, and my colleague to my right took away my thunder with the other parking lot. The municipal parking lot is an abomination. It really needs to be fully redone, but I'll settle for the potholes being fixed for now, until we can find a funding source to redo the whole lot. But certainly, the parking lot for the seniors at the Rosetti Center should be completely redone and at least pass the potholes in the municipal parking lot. So I completely agree with this motion, and let's hopefully, we'll get some action right away. Thank you.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I think, my feeling is, and I know Counselor Zambudo probably feels the same way, that both of those lots should be done, and there should be adequate crossings for pedestrians across those streets down there, for people to do park in the municipal parking lot, so they can feel comfortable crossing there and not worrying about cars flying up and down the street. So there's two streets involved there, there's no reason why they can't put the crosswalks there for the seniors, and that can be done when they're striping these lots. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Just for information, there was, I did put a motion in, and it was completed about a year ago for 12 handicap parking permits in the municipal lot, and it was done. So there is adequate now parking for the seniors, handicapped seniors, to park there. But you're right, I mean, I think we did, I think when Mayor Rizzo was, Counselor Rizzo was mayor, he did appropriate, appropriate some money for that municipal parking lot, and it just hasn't been done, and it's in deplorable shape, so I think both lots need to be done. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna may offer an amendment, that we read it to repave the parking lot at the Rosetti Senior Center and repair, make necessary repairs to the municipal lot, and then in the next part, where you have conditioning about large potholes and concrete and include striping. So Madam Clerk, will, after senior center, add and make necessary repairs to the municipal lot, and then where she lists potholes, broken concrete, will also add and redo striping. On the motion as amended? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by councilors McKenna and Janino, that the city clerk be requested to research and draft an ordinance banning plastic straws and stirrers. It was brought to our attention from the DCR, the Revere Beautification Committee, and the Beachmont Improvement Committee, that plastic straws and stirrers are the number one items littering Revere Beach. As sand fills the straws, they get buried under the sand. toxic to sea life.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. So it was brought to my attention from the Beachmont Improvement Committee, the Riviere Beautification Committee. They sit with DCR once a month, and they go over problems in Riviere. And one of the biggest problems, DCR said, was the straws were out of control on the beach. And when they fill up with sand, I guess they get stuck in the sand and the grader can't get them. People can't get them when they're doing cleanups. So they asked if we would take on this motion and see if we could come up with some sort of solution to get rid of the plastic straws. And I'm just going to read a little bit. I just did a little research, but it says, it's estimated that in the year 2050, there will be more plastic in the ocean than fish, with so many other pollution problems why straws. Straws are an easy thing for everybody to get started, to get started on when approaching an enormous issue of plastic pollution. So it's not going to affect seniors, I know the plastic bags, we had a problem with the seniors affording bags, but this is, we can switch to paper straws, like we did when we were kids. It said, do you, paper bags too, sure. Did you know over 500,000 plastic straws are used each day in the United States? In only the past 20 years, people have come to expect plastic straws in every drink, and an example of extreme waste being generated for minimal convenience. So we could switch to biodegradable straws. I mean, I don't think it's going to cost any more for the vendors, but it will clean up the city, and I think it's a great start. And I think, what I think is, in 10 years, you're going to see no more plastic, because that's where it's coming to. So let's, let's vote yes tonight and ban plastic straws. Let's, let this be the last straw in Riviere. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKenna. And if I may, I'm going to speak briefly on it as well, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues. When councillor McKenna approached me about this motion, I was enthusiastic to be a part of it because it's something that I believe in, you know. If you went back 30 years, nobody used plastic. So all of these plastic inventions that are polluting our community, to people that have been around for a long time, are not things that we know how to live without. We can come up with replacements for them, as councillor McKenna mentioned, there are other options. Something that stuck out in my mind when she brought this up to me was, a couple of years back, there was a video that circulated online of a sea turtle that had a plastic straw stuck up his nose, and it was absolutely heartbreaking to watch. It cried like a person. And that's, it's happening every day. You know what I mean? It's affecting our wildlife, it affects the quality of the beach. You know, it's not something you want when you're playing with your kids down the beach to have them pick up items like that. And it's just one further step forward for the city of Riviere. I think we're trying to be proactive and as we do with so many things in our city, be ahead of the game. And I think that this is a great opportunity for us to make a really small change. I know myself, I get a nice coffee almost every day. So if you could think about just, you know, one person's impact, that's 30 straws a month. So I think that there's definitely room for improvement, and I think it's a great start on behalf of councillor McKenna, and I thank you for including me in it. I'm going to defer to the council. Councillor Guanasso, can't wait for this one.
Madam President, that's the straw that broke the camel's back. How in the world do we enforce this type of thing? Do we have straw detectives? Do we have the Piper Plovers group come down with their binoculars watching to see who's using a dangerous straw? We have people being mugged around the corner, worrying about a straw on the beach. I'm not a naysayer, I'm just wondering so much about environmental that we might be losing the concept of reality. You know, I'm dead set against blast, yeah, paper bags. Senior citizens vote for me, and I appreciate their will. They shop. Most, a lot of young people don't shop. But on the straw issue, there's no way in the world, Madam President, that we can enforce this. How can you possibly define someone discarding a straw? I know this, I know I'm going to get a lot of attention on this, but, you know, I'm here to speak my mind, and unfortunately, this is the way, the direction I go in. I just, I cannot feel injustice that this could be enforced. If we write laws that can't be enforced, then what good are the laws that we're writing? So that's my short speech on that, Madam President. And I appreciate the straw that broke the camel's back.
Councillor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure I have any good jokes to go along with this outside of, you know, all of these types of motions and thoughts on changing some of the environment that we live in Riviera. I mean, they all come from the right mindset in looking to make a difference in our community, but also, you know, at some point, we have to attempt to make some sort of change. Not every change is going to happen, and we're not going to be able to adopt every law. And I'm not necessarily even sure I would be in favor of it or not, although I think it's a great idea. It's funny that a beverage manager that I work with said recently, similar to the plastic bag ban, he said, I'd be more in favor of getting rid of those plastic straws. I think they're even worse for the environment. And more and more companies throughout the country, throughout the world, are taking this stance, and they're starting to make changes. So again, I'm not trying to make all these widespread changes, but I think it's a good thought, and it's the right direction we have to start heading into, because if we don't change, the world is going to pass us by. We're going to have to change every year, every week, every month. Things are going to keep changing, or we can just stand here and be dinosaurs. So this might not be the one, this might not be the straw that breaks your camel's back, but it might be, but it might be something that we have to look into, and we should be open to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sure the motion is well-fought. And while we're on the subject of things getting into the water, I'd be more concerned with getting the shopping carts, the tires, the batteries, and the pieces of fence and the fragmites out of the Eastern County ditch that would help reduce the flooding for the people that live down on Oak Island and Lower Riviera Street. That ditch right now has filled to capacity. People are having problems down there on Sagamore Street with the drainage not functioning properly. I know we're going to be doing a lot of work down there in the next several weeks, but I think in addition to that work, I said, that ditch needs to be cleaned to allow the water to flow from those new drainage lines we're going to be putting in down through Arcadia Street and out to the tide gate on the B and M tracks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Rizzo?
Sure. Yep. That's okay, Madam President. I feel like I drew the short straw. There had to be one more in there.
Can we take a straw poll?
This is way too much fun for a city council meeting. So I agree with all points that have been made here tonight. You know, councillor Powers and councillor Guanasso talking about, whether it be crime or talking about, you know, other types of pollutants and other type of trash and things that we have to pay attention to are absolutely real, and we do have to pay attention to those, but there's nothing wrong with taking on this as well. You know, it is a small step, but it's a step in the right direction. And, you know, there's that old saying, you know, that people, you know, politicians are here for the next election and statesmen are here for the next generation. I think we can act like statesmen, you know, here, here tonight and going forward, where we're thinking about the next generation and the generation after that, and what kind of a world are we going to leave for them. And so these little steps, I mean, I'm not sure how you're going to enforce this, but, you know, if, you know, we can relay to establishments throughout the city, the city's desire to get away from plastic, then, you know, that's a very positive step going forward. And I totally support this, I totally support this motion while still supporting cleaning out the Eastern County ditch and trying to reduce the flooding and trying to reduce crime and things like that. But, you know, again, this is just one step that the city can take to be environmentally friendly, and there's no, there's no denying climate change. I mean, you can argue all day long about global warming and all this stuff, but, you know, the hundred-year storms do come a lot faster and more frequently. And so I think that we do, we do need to take steps, and I think that this was well-thought out by my colleagues on the council, and I support it. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Zambudo?
Okay, so I don't want to be the straw man. I had to get one in, I mean, what the heck? Listen, I'm all for forward-thinking, and I think this is a nice forward-thinking motion. Obviously, like I said, with the plastic bag ban, I want data. This needs to go to Legislative Affairs. We need data. We need to know what the implications of banning straws, how you would ban the straws, how you would enforce it, as my colleagues said. There's a lot to talk about this, but I'm not saying it's not a good idea. I don't want to see turtles with straws up their nose, and I also don't want to see fish killed with the beer things. Those are, those are probably worse. So there's a lot of things that, you know, down the road need to be done, and I'm willing to talk about all of them, but I need, you know, like anything else, I need data. I want to know the implications of what we're going to do here. But I'm all for forward-thinking, I think it's great. I don't consider these feel-good motions like I do some of the resolutions we put in here. These actually, these are actually good thoughts, and maybe they can be implemented with some kind of controls, I don't know. But we need, we need a lot more data than just saying, let's ban straws and vote on it immediately. That's, that's, that would be insanity. So I'd like to see this go to Legislative Affairs, and we can get some data on who's doing this, who's done it, who's ever done it, is there a way to do it, you know, all that kind of stuff, the relevant information. But I'm not fool-pooing the idea. I think it's, I think it's forward-thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you councillors for the positive feedback. I just want to tell you about the rings, the beer rings, they just came up with a biodegradable beer ring, so if it goes in the water, it disintegrates, and if the fish eat it, it doesn't hurt them. The other thing is, we can't enforce straws, but we can make some of these businesses transfer into paper straws. So that's a one way. And I agree with you councillors Zambudo, the conversation, it's a good start, and we need to keep talking about it. But it is, it is good thinking, and it's a step forward, and it's great for Riviere if we can, if we can get this off the ground. So thank you very much for your support.
If I may, colleagues, I have one closing thought after hearing everyone's comments. One of the things I think is really important to think about is, this doesn't affect the residents in terms of purchasing, it forces the big companies to make decisions and purchase them. If you come up with an ordinance like this, they're going to purchase the straws to be compliant. They're going to purchase the bags that need to be compliant. And again, on the bag thing, not that it's on topic, but because someone brought it up, it doesn't mean all plastic bags are banned. It means that a certain type of plastic bag is banned, one, one category of plastic. And in terms of, when you look at the United States as a whole, we're behind the ball. There are communities that are banning Styrofoam, there are communities that are banning, that may be next, plastic straws, there are communities banning plastic bags. And all of these things are not changes a community makes overnight, and it's not something that is meant to hurt small businesses, it's something that's meant to make the big corporations make environmentally friendly changes to, you know, step by step make a big impact. But I look forward to seeing it in committee and seeing some more data on it as well. This will be going to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number 20, this is a motion of councillor Rotundo, who's absent.
Hold it to the next meeting forum? We'll hold council item 20 for councillor Rotundo.
Councillor Nowoselski submitted a late motion to me.
Sure.
That the mayor requests the License Commission to revisit the recent parking lot license fee increase and explore the feasibility of a tiered fee system based on the number of parking spaces.
Councillor Nowoselski?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, a couple of weeks ago, we had passed a motion requesting the License Commission to increase the fees of parking lots to $100. And they, with their wisdom, increased it to $365 per space. There are only six parking lot permits in the city Riviera, and some of them have small amounts and some have large amounts. And one of the smaller amounts is, you know, is a small parking lot that rents, you know, we approved a special permit for five days and can only operate 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and they are affected by this $365 at 60 spaces. And so that's almost $21,000 that they would have to pay for this small lot, realizing that our target was Wonderland, and I have no problem with Wonderland paying $365 a day. But I, and I explained it to the License Commission that I was concerned about the small guy. And this is the case where I, if we did a, asked them to do a tiered, look at a tiered system, like say, one to 100 spaces, 100 to 250 spaces, and then over 250 spaces, and then accordingly price them out, I still look for the $100, you know, for the, for the smaller people, because, excuse me, that's been $25 for 50 years in the city, as far as I know. But, and they are going to get some kind of increase somewhere down the line. This is the time it's happening. So, you know, the $100, I would say, would be the minimum for the small lot, you know, maybe, you know, $200 for the medium-sized lots, and $365 for the lots over 251 cars. So I'm looking at that for them, just to be fair to the little guy in then, and knowing that this little guy only has a portion of the usage that we allowed him. All the other ones have 365 days, 24/7. So I can understand that they are making more money than the little guy. And we also have to look at the little guy on the beach during the summertime. You know, some of them only have 10, 15, 20 cars, but right now, if they had 20 cars, they'd have to pay $6,000 for just a weekend parking lot, which I think is a little above and beyond anybody's means. So I think they, and they should also include rating short-term parking, like the weekend or the one-week parkers, or even the three-month parkers. So I think they should look at that, and I think we should ask them to do that and take these things into consideration. So I hope the council will move this forward to the, so they can bring it up at the next meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I am, I'm sure there probably could be a formula for some relief for small operators of parking lots. However, every day I go by Wonderland, I see loads of cars coming in and out. As you know, the zoning officer for the city, the building inspector, issued a cease and desist. They appealed that to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals denied their request. Now they've appealed at the Superior Court. I would estimate from the cars going in and out there on a daily basis, and we're not talking about five days a week, we're talking about weekends too, the cars sit there, they're probably raking in seven, $800,000 a year. That's just a rough estimate, maybe even more. So, you know, we sit here and we talk about traffic in the city every week, traffic, traffic. People that we represent out there, they're concerned with traffic, traffic, traffic. If we're going to allow those type of parking lots in the city, then we should be getting some revenue and putting it back into some revenue and putting it back into the city, streets, sidewalks, things like that that appears to the senior center. There's a million, million things you can do with that money. But just to let cars keep coming in here and abusing our roadways, causing wear and tear on our roadways, and just sitting there while they're raking in the money, that's completely wrong. And I, I'm 100% in favor of a company like Wonderland paying those rates. They need to. They need to step up to the plate and support the city. As we sit here tonight, excuse me, they're raking in dollar after dollar with those cars down there. I went by today, they must have 800 cars in that parking lot. That's, that's wrong, and it should be addressed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other councilors on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. There's no further business. This city council will be adjourned until May 21st. Thank you.